Okay. Good evening. It's 6:00 PM, December 8th, 2021. I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd also like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local channel 18. Now, if we could all rise, we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to announce that we're going to be taking public comment for every hearing at the end of that hearing. Board members Bill Blaisdell and Sharon Sangalier are absent tonight, so sitting on our first continued hearing will be our four regular board members as well as George Ganzen-Muller. So Charlie, would you please read the first continued hearing?
Continued hearing, 38 Pleasant Park Drive. Owner, One Village Marketplace LLC requests an appeal of the building official's decision under Mass General laws, Chapter 48, Sections 88 and 15. Applicant maintains that the lot qualifies as a protected nonconforming buildable single-family lot and should be entitled to a building permit on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 70, parcel 165, Mashpee, Mass. Continued from November 10th, 2021. Hearings at the request of the board.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. If you recall, we were here a few weeks back and we were to afford the board the opportunity to contact town council and determine whether town council had anything to add to the previous opinion that he had rendered when we applied for a variance about eight months ago. So I did agree to that continuance and I guess we're not much to add. I mean, you've got my written presentation, you've got the case law that I presented, you've got the fact that variances were granted for these lots. You also have the facts that as a general rule, when lot sizes change, they change because of issues and concerns relative to septic. And we don't have that in this particular case because there's an agreement that Will O'Ben will allow these lots to be tied into their sewage treatment facility. So our position is clear. We've made it clear that we don't believe that these lots merge because of the fact that variances were granted, which in my opinion, you know, vests the rights of the property owner, notwithstanding the fact that at some point after the variances were granted, they were brought back into a form of common ownership. So as I said, you were going to contact town council and let and find out what town whether or not town council had anything to add based upon the additional information that I had provided in the context of the last, the last hearing.
Okay, well, as you know, and as you just said, nothing really has changed. We did get the really exact same comment from town council as well as from the town planner. And I think we've been through this a number of times. The only change was that the town engineer did weigh in on this. And that's what kind of prompted us continuing it. So in fact, he did. Let me see if I. Well, he's not here. All right, so I have an email from, that I'll read from Chris Gallagher, and it's dated November 17th, in reference Attorney Corrine's written narrative regarding 38 Pleasant Park Drive. And it's, it's to the town planner as well as a number of people, including myself, Mary Anne, and people on the board, as well as David Morris. And Chris says, "After taking a second look at the 38 Pleasant Park Drive case, I am in agreement with Evan. I can see an argument on both sides, and I think it would be best be settled upon appeal. The case I mentioned in the past did not have a subsequent merger as this one did, but was acted upon via a building permit shortly after the conveyance. The subsequent merger is what makes the two cases different." So he has kind of gone back on what he had said, I believe it was two weeks ago at night. And again, Evan has said, "With regard to 38 Pleasant Park Drive, council has already opinioned on this issue. The issue surrounding the lot merger and validity of formerly issued variances have been vetted by council, and I provided to the CBA his opinion in the past. Based on the town council's opinion, I recommend upholding the building commissioner's decision." And it goes on and on, but basically says the same thing. So, you know, the town, this board certainly listens to our town council and our building officials in this town, so I think that's the position that I, at least I'm going to take. But we're going to throw it out for a vote and see where it goes. And if it goes the way I think it's going to go, you know what your alternative is.
Correct.
So, Ron, would you make a motion on this?
Do you want an affirmative motion?
Yeah, we're going to make it an affirmative.
Okay.
And then we, you would vote yes if you wanted to overturn it. You'd vote no if you did not want to overturn the building commission.
Excuse me. I would like to make a motion that we approve the appeal by One Village Marketplace LLC of the building's official decision under Mass General law, Chapter 48, Section 8 and 15. Applicant maintains, and the applicant maintains that the lot qualifies as a protected nonconforming building, single-family lot, and should be entitled to a building permit on property located in R3 zoning district, map 70, parcel 165, Mashpee, Mass.
Okay. So we've got a second here, and so let's do a roll call vote. So, Ron, how do you vote?
No.
Scott?
No.
Jim?
No.
George?
No.
And I vote no. Okay, you know your next move.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. So this is going to be as a denial on this, isn't it?
I know. Jeez. And those proper box.
New hearings, 374 Monmouth Goy Road. Petitioner Roger Brooks with Capewide Construction requests a written finding under Section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for an extension, alteration of a pre-existing nonconforming structure on property located in the R3 zoning district, map 125, parcel 17, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Richard J. Moreau, Senior Trustee.
Hi.
Hi. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Roger Brooks from Capewide Construction here on behalf of the Richard J. Moreau Senior Revocable Trust, and so on. We are, do you want the plan up, or do you all have it in front of you?
We've all got it.
We're here seeking a written finding for a relatively minor addition on a modest house. It's a very narrow, long lot. We're going to extend the house about 10 feet towards the water and about, let's see, what are we doing? About 12 feet of new deck, also towards the water, I'm sorry, 20 feet of new deck. We're maintaining the existing side setbacks. That's where we're nonconforming. We have an existing lot coverage of 11.4%. Proposed is 13.1%, well under the 20% lot coverage. We have been through conservation. We are not crossing the 100-foot buffer. Conservation approved our RDA. We are in a flood zone, and everything will be built to flood zone standards. Do you have any questions?
Pretty simple. I don't have any.
Again, it's just pretty straightforward. It's continuing along a already, you know, existing nonconformity, and I have no issues other than I'll just let the board do what they do.
And so wetlands conservation agreed to this 100-foot line and the buffer, and they're saying you are, you request determinate applicability was negative.
Negative determination.
Okay, great. I am.
I'm going to have Charlie sit on this in place of Bill. So anybody else have questions, Ron? Anybody in the audience? What do we have from conservation?
Conservation has renewed improved the project.
You've got no issues whatsoever.
You guys good?
Yeah. You're not changing any bedrooms, I think it's just the extension of the family room.
Just the, 200 square feet of family room addition and...
You're not reconfiguring the floor plan to add bedrooms?
Nope. Basically, we're just extending the living room.
Okay, I'm good. Ron, would you make a motion?
I would love to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a written finding. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a written finding to Capewide, to Roger Brooks of Capewide Construction in reference to 374 Monmouth Goy Road, set for a written finding under Section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for an extension or alteration of a pre-existing nonconforming structure on property located in R3 zoning district, map 125, parcel 17, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Richard J. Moreau, Senior, trustee, with the following conditions. One, board has termed the applicant meets all the conditions of his written finding under Mass General law, 48, Section 6. Two, site plan, 374 Monmouth Goy Road, prepared for Capewide construction, date, October 12th, 2021, scale 1 inch to equals 30 feet, prepared by Down Cape Engineering, Inc., signed by Dan Ule, P E, P L S, date 10/12/21. Three, renovations to Moreau residence, 374 Monmouth Goy Road, Mashpee, Mass, prepared by Chief Petro Architects, drawing title, proposed floor plans drawn by JJ, checked by RPL, date 9/22/2021, revisions 9/8/21, 10/01/21, 10/06/21, project 21/28, sheet A1, sheet A2. Four, condition that any changes to the plan require the applicant return to the zoning board of appeals. Five, condition all town comments read into the record, including but not limited to the fact that he has gone to and obtained an RDA, negative finding from conservation commission.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Jim will second. Let's do a roll call vote. Charlie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Well done.
Thank you for your time.
Sorry it took so long.
Yes.
Nice presentation.
Thank you.
I wish they were all like that.
I'll try and bring something harder next time.
No, no.
Can you get, help me get the piece of steel in?
Brad, you're going to sit on the next one. Okay. 12.
Okay, the last new hearing is 165 Uncle Percy's Road. Petitioner is Joseph Von Caldo, requests a variance under Section 174-33, setback from water and wetlands to allow for reconstruction of the deck on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 117, parcel 370, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Francesco Von Caldo.
How you doing? That's my dad.
Hi.
Joe Von Caldo, hi, good evening. Basically, we're, 165 Uncle Percy, it's an existing deck that has, is in need of repair and replacement. So when we did the, the new plot plan, basically, we, we fell within the new 50-foot setback limit, which I believe when the deck where the house was built wasn't in place. So we're just looking for relief to, to be able to work on that deck, as is. Where the only changes we're making, we're actually extending it six feet forward and three feet to the left, which still stays within all setbacks. It's, it's fully conforming, it's just the 50-foot setback. The conservation has already approved it. They were on-site, they, you know, we walked the site, we walked the back. There's no, there actually is no footings beyond the back of the house. So if you look at the foundation in blue, there's no footings that fall past the foundation of the house.
Okay, so I'm looking at this plot plan, and I see, well, top to bottom.
Yep.
On the left-hand side, it says, "Proposed expansion of deck," and it leads to a little section there.
Right.
And then around it, there's a, another big set of lines.
Yeah, that's the mulch sock.
I'm sorry?
That's just a mulch sock for, for, you know, no seabird into the protected area.
Oh, okay.
Just a protection.
That's not part of the deck.
No, 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 that's just a, we're required to put the mulch sock.
I understand. Thank you.
No problem.
Yeah, they're not getting any more nonconforming than they are.
We're going to read. Would you like to read conservation, Charlie?
165 Uncle Percy Road, Conservation Commission has renewed improved construction.
There are no other comments. Any comments from anybody in the audience?
Did, what were the order conditions? Were there anything that conservation gave you as an order of conditions?
No, none at all. As a matter of fact, he did, when he visited the site, he did give me permission, if I wanted to, to drop some, you know, some sonotubes beyond the foundation, which wouldn't extend beyond the actual deck, but we're not, we're going to just use where the existing ones were. We're not going to...
But that wouldn't change the plan?
No.
In front of this board?
Nope.
Easy enough.
So, I'm sorry.
Anybody have, any questions, comments concerning? Brad, you're sitting on this. Okay.
It's ordinarily, if it stayed in the same footprint, this is pretty straightforward. If it stayed in the same footprint, it probably wouldn't be it. But he extended it a little bit, so that's why it came in for extra relief for that. Pretty straightforward.
All right, Ron, would you make a motion on this?
I would. I have the, I have to ask the applicant a question. So how much relief are you actually seeking? So knowing it's 50 feet.
Right.
So we need to set a number of relief in reference to that 50-foot variation. How much is it?
Right. It's less than 32 feet.
So are you saying you're looking for an 18-foot variation of relief?
Correct.
You concur with that?
Yeah.
18 on the button?
Um...
Remember, if you use the wrong number here, sir, and you come...
Yeah, yeah.
It's your number, not mine.
Yep. I have, um...
The front of the house is 33.2. That's the closest the house is to the street. And he's well back from there.
I just...
Right. But how about going to the wetlands? No, no relief there.
No.
There's no numbers in there.
How about on the sides? Any relief needed?
It's 144 feet in the wetlands, so that's not an issue.
Right. And...
Well, so there's a blue line right there that goes right through that says it's 50-foot setback from apparent wetland limit, right?
Correct.
So the question is, the big question is, is so what's the distance from that blue line to the very back? From here to there?
Well, it's 30 feet. What's that line, a 30-foot line?
Looks like about 36.
Yeah, it's just under 36 feet, like 32 and a half.
So you're asking to have the 50-foot reduced down to 14 feet? Is that correct?
Yeah, 30, yeah, that would be safe.
I'd rather you tell us than for me to tell you.
Yeah, I would say if, if we go from the 50 down to, I mean, we have 30...
Give yourself enough room.
Yeah, I'm just going to give it a little extra. I'd say, let's go to 10.
You need a variance of 10, correct?
Correct.
So you're going to go down to 10?
No, yeah, we're going to go the opposite.
Relief of 40.
40, relief of 40.
So...
Yep.
You're okay with that, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I just don't want you to have to pack.
Yep.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we issue a variance to Joseph Von Caldo under Section 174-33, setback from water and wetlands at 165 Uncle Percy's Road. Said variance is in, the relief slot is in the amount of 40 feet. 50 feet from wetlands is required. It's depicted on the plan as 10 feet, thus the relief slot and obtain is 40 feet. And that's to allow for construction of a deck on property located in R3 zoning district, map 117, parcel 370, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Francesco Von Caldo. Interesting for my motion, one second, I did that. Number one, the board has termed the applicant meets all the conditions of variance under Mass General law, 48, under 48, Section 6, Section 10, sorry. Number two, the plot plan, 165 Uncle Percy's Road, Mashpee, Mass, owner Francesco Von Caldo, scale 1 inch to equals 20 feet, date November 4th, 2021, prepared, stamped by Evanson R. Brown, PLS number 48645. Condition, all town department comments read into the record. Condition that any change to the plan require the applicant to return to the zoning board of appeals. In reference to comments read into the record, it's conditioned on the fact that the zoning, that the Conservation Commission has issued an order of conditions on this property, which would not negatively impact the decision of this board.
Second.
Okay, Jim seconds. So Brad, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
And I vote yes?
Thank you. Have a great evening.
You too.
Thank you.
All sorts of good stuff.
So he has no idea. I don't know what that distance is.
He wanted it to be 10.
He needs 10, yeah.
I have no idea.
He needs 40, which leaves 10 from the wetlands.
10, which leaves 10. Okay. And they approved it anyways.
They approved it. Because it was a pre-existing.
Yeah. But what's the Conservation...
They approved it.
Yeah.
Right. He's not moving the apartment.
Yeah. Yeah, why was he here? Is he required, like in high school, you got to go to? You know what I mean?
So...
Remember, I'm only a volunteer.
Always great.
We don't vote on the next, on other business, do we? Okay. Cad, you're going to sit on this next one, other business. So you're, you're going to vote on that.
Cad. Cad.
Also known as Robert or Bob. Affectionately known as Cad.
We did.
So nobody here representing 684 Falmouth Road, but we do have some information on it. So Charlie, would you read the first other business?
Yep, other, other business. 684 Falmouth Road, petitioner Andrew Inea requests a modification to an existing special permit, SP-07-55, for a change of use from retail to clinical, physical therapy outpatient under Mass General laws, 40A, Section 9, and Section 174-24D2. Of the zoning bylaws on property located in the C1 zoning district, map 81, parcel 24A, Mashpee, Mass. The board to determine if considered a minor modification and its correspondence relative to this.
Okay. So what's happening here, please help me out if I'm wrong, is there's currently, or there currently was a business on a special permit at this location, and they want to change the business that's going to be there, and they're looking for a modification of the special permit to allow this particular business.
It was a retail, it was a retail flooring store, B and F, and now there's a physical therapy, therapy business coming. No change in the size of the building, they're just...
Right. The use of what's going in there.
And that requires our blessing?
Yeah. So whether it's a major or minor modification.
Some reminder to me.
Right. Well, we have town council weighing in, excuse me, town planner weighing in on this. And so let me read what the town planner says. This is from Evan Lera, and this is dated Thursday, December 2nd, and it's to Mary Anne, and it's regarding 684 Falmouth Road. Mary Anne, please forward my comments to the ZBA for your upcoming meeting. Reference, 684 Falmouth Road. Here's my recommendation. The applicant requested withdrawal of his petition for a minor special permit modification for the change of use at 684 Falmouth Road from a retail use to a clinical, physical therapy outpatient office, and that the Board of Appeal grant this request. This appears on your agenda because I had suggested it to Mary Anne as a regulatory requirement. Upon further consultation of the zoning bylaw, this change of use does not require additional regulatory review by the Board of Appeals. And it goes on and lists it, and will enter this into the record anyway, but as to why it doesn't require it. So I've got no issue with this whatsoever. Do you have any comments on this, David?
I agree with Tom.
I agree with town planner.
Okay.
We have no applicant to ask.
Right?
What do you want to say?
So, we're going to vote to... Yeah, we, has he actually requested?
Yeah, he has, there's a letter here.
I'll read it.
Okay, go ahead.
To the zoning town, Mash, presenting the zoning board town of Mashpee from Indiania, Friday 12/3.
Oh, actually, do we?
To Mary Ann Romero. At this time, I requesting withdrawal of my petition pursuant to the recommendations submitted by the town planner and building commission. Thank you, Indiania owner, Indiania physical therapy.
I didn't see that. Can you ask it?
You can have it.
Okay. So that's an email.
So there's an email, and he's requesting withdrawal. So that makes it easier, we can vote as to accept or not accept his withdrawal request. So would you make a motion on this?
I'd love to. I'd like to make a motion that we accept Andrew Inea of 684 Falmouth Road's request of a modification of an existing special permit email dated February, Friday 12/3, 2021, time 3:44 PM to Mary Ann Romero. And it states that at this time, he'd like to withdraw his petition for a stit for said modification to special permit, SP-07-55.
Okay, do we have a second? Jim, do you want to say, Charlie?
Sure.
Oh, well, it's got to be one of us sitting on it. All right, so Jim's going to second it, so Cadd, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Easy enough?
I'm at the very tail end.
Hands for the record. Do you wish there were all this season?
Oh, I know, it's 6:30, it's still half hour.
Before you close it off, I just want to...
Yes, well, we're going to, we're going to vote to accept the minutes, and then we'll go into your... Oh, anything to sign?
No.
This is very easy.
She signed the Didi out.
No, I mean the five of us decide.
I know.
Okay, Charlie, would you read the next other business, please?
To approve November 10, 2021, minute reading minutes.
I assume that's a request, yes. So we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Scott, under other topics.
Just had a conversation with one of the architects I do a lot of work with, and he brings a lot of stuff through this board. We're both a little confused on, this is more of a question for David also. And you see very, when there's a, when a house is in there, a special, special permit? Not special permit.
Yeah, special permit.
When it's a razor place, they don't have to come to us for approval for the razor place. But they still end up coming for setbacks to wetlands. And if conservation approves it, why do they still need to come to us? If it's a special permit?
We have the final say.
But we don't have any say on the, on the razor place and the setbacks and all that. Why do they have to come here for, if like five things are crossed off?
Because, just because they approve it, like Conservation approves it, it still has to come to us for us to...
It just prolongs it, but...
It probably wasn't in the special, in my opinion.
Yeah, it wasn't in the original special permit.
Oh, wetland setbacks?
No.
Okay, then that answered it.
I think that, I think that even Chris, Chris expanded on it, the height as well.
So the only thing on a special permit is setbacks and height? Nothing to do with wetland setbacks?
Right, that is not in the special permit.
After probably the special permit, which is 100 years old.
62.
Yeah, the 62, so that wetland setback came somewhere after that.
Okay, then that's, now I got an answer to tell them. Because I couldn't give a straight answer.
Yeah, we just said that.
I'm going to give them the answer that I got. Thank you.
And I, yeah, and the thing that I'm trying to avoid is having ARC in this board conflict. So if the, if ARC comes up with an approval, I'm tending not to bring it here to change that, to, you know, where they could, you know, you could see it a different way.
It just, we couldn't figure out why, you know, five things are crossed off but that one thing's not crossed off. It just, you know, prolongs the permit process.
Yeah, yeah, it's, you know, it's just...
But now it makes sense.
Something...
I'm good, that's the way it's going to be.
All right.
I think it's very confusing, though, with that difference between who's Seaver and the rest of the world.
Yeah. Over and over the world.
Yeah, it's unique.
Yeah.
Let's say that.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, George, would you like to close the meeting, make a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Scott second, now Scott jumped in. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.